Welcome. I'd like to call to order the first ever joint discussion only meeting between the East Lansing City Council and the East Lansing Downtown Development Authority. Will the clerk read the roll, please?
Councilmember Babcock.
Present.
Councilmember Brad.
Here.
Councilmember Meadows.
Here.
Mayor Protem Stevens.
Here.
Mayor Byer.
Here.
Greg Ballin.
Here.
Lindsey Clayton.
Here.
Luke Hackney.
Here.
Michael Kruger.
Here.
George Lahanas.
Here.
Joe Rhodey.
Here.
Eric Sidall.
Here.
James Croom.
And Peter Dwan.
Here.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Can I have a motion?
It's moved.
It's moved by the Mayor Protem and seconded by?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Babcock. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed, the same sign. We have an approved agenda. The next item is communications from the audience. If anybody would like to speak about issues related to the DDA or the city council or any issues actually, please come to the podium. Do we have a blue card up there, Mr. Pearson?
You do.
Would you fill that up when you're finished, please?
I will do that, thank you.
Thank you.
David Pearson, on behalf of DRW Convexity, I wanted to introduce something at the beginning of this meeting which the DDA has already heard about, which you have, the council, through your staff, who have the proposal and are analyzing it now. As you know from your later meeting agenda, we have been moving ahead with final plans for Building C. That's the building that is part of the overall site plan for the construction, it's the project that's underway on Grand River Avenue. That would come to council on December 17th for a public hearing. It was unanimously recommended for approval by the Planning Commission at its meeting last week on Wednesday. The reason we're bringing a proposal forward now is frankly exactly that timing. As we explained at those meetings to the Planning Commission, Convexity wants to move ahead with Building C now, not just to get ahead of the deadline for actually using the property, but it works very well in terms of the construction that's underway on the existing building and minimizes the disruption to what is and will be the western end of downtown and presents an opportunity for using the same construction companies and the same crews as a matter of fact. But, at this point, that means it's really the only time to bring forward this offer. And in addition, you had had an exclusive agreement with someone else to purchase the DDA property. What's proposed is that Convexity would purchase the DDA property and brings to it certain unique aspects that others can't. The first is that what has been called the Building C property would be donated to the city for use as a park. What that means is that if that portion of Valley Court Park, Valley Court Drive that's in between the Building C parcel and the existing park were eliminated, you would have a full five acre park at that place. In addition to the purchase price of $3 million, Convexity has an existing brownfield plan which covers A and D, the buildings on Grand River, which will be finished this coming year and will go on the tax rolls at full value in 2021. By amending that brownfield plan, two things can be done because those bring real value. First, the other $2 million approximately of the debt could be paid using interlocal payments out of the brownfield tax increment financing directly to pay those debts. In addition, there would be $5 million which would be available to pay for all of the infrastructure improvements that the city wants and needs in that area, including the full addition of the Albert Avenue cut through, passed through to Valley Court Park, as well as the utility improvements that are required, and the extension of Evergreen as a pedestrian and bicycle pathway. And, there would be a million and a half dollars for improvements to the newly expanded park. In the plans that we've given you, there are some, in essence, proposed examples of what could be done with that money. They are meant to be nothing other than examples to show what the difference in the configuration of the park could really make. Obviously, as a community, you need to decide what you want to do with your park. We realize this was a very limited window of opportunity. I know that the city has been looking at this RFP for a very long time. And in some ways, it seems an odd time to bring this proposal forward, but frankly, because of the coincidence of those various events, this was the only time to bring it forward. As I mentioned at the beginning, we have the proposal with your staff, your city manager. Tom Farrenbach has had it for a week and has been analyzing it, and we understand that they'll be talking to you about what their analysis is. We'd be glad to answer any questions that you have, but would appreciate your considering the offer. Thank you.
Hang on one second. Mayor Protem?
So, Building C is the building referenced with moderate income housing, correct?
Correct. It is the affordable housing component of the project, and it is the 25% for the occupancy.
Yeah, so is there any intention with this new? And again, so I was at the DDA meeting last week where this was referenced, and I had not received a copy of this yet until later that day, so I didn't get a chance to review it then when I heard about it at that meeting.
Yes.
But is there any intention to move that moderate income housing into a new area?
No, this proposal would replace the affordable housing project with the park.
Okay.
In essence, it is a straightforward replacement. So, yes, we would lose the affordable housing component. That's correct.
And so, what you're looking for, to my understanding, is similarly vain to the deal that was originally proposed with the former developer where it would be an exclusive arrangement with a purchase property contingent on a site plan approval as well, so kind of just the last thing that we just made through?
Yes, yes. And what is in it is a proposal that we would have to get through city council, where I think it's you have a meeting on March 26th, and then close within, I believe, I don't have the LOI in front of me, but within days thereafter effectively.
So, if this RFP were to go out and you were to not receive that level of exclusivity on a deal, you would be going forward with Building C with moderate income housing?
Yes, at least in terms of our present planning, it has to go because our view on the RFP is frankly, even if it goes out December 1st, you're going to have it out for 90 to 120 days. Presumably, there's another 60 days or so to evaluate the various proposals, then there's going to be some period of time to work with whoever you want to choose and move forward with.
Sure.
So that really, we'd be looking at probably a construction start sometime about a year from this spring.
Sure.
We're proposing to collapse that effectively.
Sure. So, I can only speak on behalf of myself, but Building C with moderate income housing was a big reason why I was in favor of the Park District project as well. I think having a public RFP and going through that process, and again, I can only speak for myself, is important for me, for the city, but maybe we'll get into more of that later.
So, I'm sorry.
The number of units in the current Building C is how many?
The, as approved, it has 72 units. With the modification, we propose that you'll be getting in December, there would be 99 units.
99 units.
Of which 74 would be moderate income.
And this new proposal has how many units in it?
A new proposal? I'll take Tom's word for it. He says it's approximately 230.
230 units. Well, just echo a little bit of what the Mayor Protem just mentioned. You know, in the current development agreement that we have with you guys, you already have the option of essentially giving us the property that you would be constructing Building C on, and according to the development agreement, that will be counted against your requirement for diversified housing in the downtown. So, if you don't build Building C, you essentially are giving us that property in exchange for what turns out to be 74 units of low to moderate income housing. And you're proposing here to give us the same deal for 230 units of housing and counting it against it. That doesn't seem like a good deal for the city, for one thing, and I agree with council member, or the Mayor Protem, that really, the RFP, not to mention the fact that you don't even have to start putting your permits in on Building C until 18 months after you get the occupancy permit for Building A, which you don't plan on getting until August of 2020. So, you've got plenty of time to work on an RFP with regard to this and make this proposal to the city and to the DDA.
If I may, the difference between the two is $5 million worth of debt in addition to the park, $5 million worth of brownfield financing for improvements.
I see there's $3 million worth of debt. You're willing to buy the property for $3 million bucks, that's $2.5 million that has to be paid on a TIF as we go forward.
If I may, this is the part of the meeting for, hang on, for comments from the audience and input from the audience, not really a tie for debate.
I apologize, ma'am.
I think, no, it wasn't your, it wasn't your instigation. I do have a factual question.
Yes.
If the proposal that you just had, what year do you know would the, how long would that extend the TIF? What year would it be?
So, the existing TIF goes for, would go for nine years.
Right.
Starting in 2021, this would add six years.
So, it would be 15 total.
So, it would be 15 total.
Thank you.
And that's the intended advantage because of the existing value of the two buildings.
Right, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Any other quest, input? Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
And you'll fill out the card? Welcome.
Hi. John McGraw, River Caddis Development, or on behalf of River Caddis Development. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. I wanted to briefly express my sincere interest in submitting for this RFP. We find that this is very important for the city of East Lansing going forward, and we've engaged our community stakeholders, we've engaged our national partners, and we're ready to provide solutions that can address infrastructure debt, and hopefully, our goal, our final goal is to activate downtown East Lansing with a daytime population. So, I really hope if the question is whether or not to release this RFP, we stick to that release because we're very interested. Our partners are ready, we're ready, the stakeholders are ready, we're ready to do something very important here in East Lansing. So, I'm here for any questions, and other than that, thank you for your time.
Did you say River Caddis?
River Caddis Development.
Thank you. Any questions for this participant? Can you fill out the blue card, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the audience wish to address this joint meeting? Okay, we'll close, we'll close this portion of the agenda and go to the discussion item. So, now we're going to start the discussion between the DDA and the city council. I'd like to start with Mr. Farrenbach will give us a little presentation about how all these pieces work together.
Great, thank you, Mayor, and members of the DDA board, I think.
Tom, can you pull your?
Yes.
Thank you.
Let me make sure to get the little pad too, so it doesn't have the feedback.
That's better.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
I thought it'd be prudent to give a bit of background information about the DDA Evergreen properties, as well as the development process we've gone through for the RFP, and certainly, we're seeking feedback today from both the council and the DDA regarding the RFP and also regarding the properties themselves. So, just by way of reference, this is where the Evergreen properties are located, just north of where the Park District Buildings A and D are currently under construction and just west of Center City Development. This is a ownership parcel map, so you can see in green the parcels owned by the DDA, 314, 328, 334, 340, and 344 Evergreen. The parcels in red are privately owned, and the parcels in yellow are city-owned parking lots. And you can see the grayed out area there is the future right-of-way that will be created by the Park District project as it realigns Albert to the west of Abbott. So, just reference here, here's 314, 328, 334, 340, and 344 are both on the same parcel, and they are all currently being rented to occupants, and that is part of the income that the properties produce for the DDA, which helps to offset the current debt that we have outstanding on the properties. It's about $5.5 million outstanding debt. This is debt that is serviced by the DDA, but is backed by the full faith and credit of the city. We, in March, I believe, restructured this debt to essentially reduce the principal payments to $110,000. It did increase the interest. We are currently paying LIBOR, which is a variable rate, plus about 200 basis points. And so, as you can see here, we've estimated it out for 2024. These are all estimates, they could fluctuate. Currently, LIBOR is tending to be heading down, but that can always change. And, there's two things of note. One is, in 2024, the principal payments increased dramatically, and they will continue to do so until 2035. Also, in April of 2023, the bank has put or reset feature at their discretion where they can either change the rate on the debt or demand payment of the entire amount. So, obviously, this is a short-term situation and one where we were intending to protect the cash flow of the DDA to allow for a solution on these properties. This is the current zoning map here. It shows the DDA properties currently zoned RM32, which is a multifamily residential district. You can see here the conditionally rezoned Building C for the Convexity project there at 341 Evergreen, and there's the Evergreen properties there. This is the comp plan's future land use map, which shows the Evergreen properties as mixed use M3, which is analogous to the B2, the current B2 district. M3 does not yet exist. As you can see here, the RM32 would allow with an SUP up to 70 feet or six stories, and the comp plan's sort of future land use map, which is analogous to B2, allows six stories or up to 84 feet with a special use permit within the DDA district. Previous plans that have been approved or considered by the council have included a conditional B3 zoning. That would be analogous to the comp plan's future land use category M4, which would allow eight stories or 112 feet with an SUP, and on the west side of Abbott, allow up to 140 feet with a three-four vote of council. Of note, most of the properties are within the historic district. I believe in the next coming weeks, the council will be considering recommendations in terms of the historic district. Also, I think one of the critical factors in any development that's going to happen in this area is the need for infrastructure improvements, and staff has been analyzing the various infrastructure needs for several years and has reached consensus essentially about what the best or desired program of infrastructure should be. And that would include sewer improvements from the terminus of Park District to Oak Hill to service both the site and the neighborhoods to the north, sewer connection from Evergreen to Abbott, water infrastructure improvements to provide capacity for future development, including the Evergreen properties, completion of the reconfigured Albert Avenue to the Valley Court Drive. It also creates the potential for the conversion of Evergreen to a ped and bike path, which we close to cars, which has been expressed, I think, by the community as a desire. So, here's just sort of a conceptual visual to show you the various utility infrastructures that would be desirous. And, we think it's important to kind of put a few options in front of you in terms of the funding for these infrastructure options. So, option one would really be for the city to self-fund through the existing sewer water and street funds. The benefits would be that we would have a certainty of the installation of critical infrastructure that does serve the adjacent neighborhoods, would add value to the Evergreen properties, would increase the capacity and resiliency in the area of our underground infrastructure, and provide for the regrading of Evergreen and Valley Court intersection, which is really a precursor for any development in the area. Also, a benefit would be the timing, be in coordination with large projects that are coming on, expected to come online late next year, and we wouldn't be in a situation where we're opening a hotel and a new residential mixed-use building on the corner and then subsequently ripping up large swaths of road to put the infrastructure in the ground. That would also have the effect of limiting the duration of the current construction impacts, which obviously affect the public and neighboring properties. The disadvantages of this would be that we would have to bear $3.5 million approximately of city costs, and we'd lose the opportunity cost of TIF financing, which would be funded by the developer and then reimbursed to the developer and would leverage non-city millages. A second option to consider would be to partner with a new development project and utilizing the benefits of TIF. So, the benefits here would be that the developers' money would finance the project and limit the city's exposure. We would be able to leverage the non-city millages. The project would be completed in coordination with the developers' project, and at that point, we would have certainty of the entire development program, including the Evergreen properties. The disadvantages here are really the uncertainty in terms of the timing and the coordination with the current projects that are underway, and in terms of what exactly the developer would want to put forward in terms of a proposal, and what their desires would be in terms of using tax increment financing, which could potentially be outside of what the council and BRA are comfortable with approving. There's also the private side of the financing where there could be potential issues there outside of our control that could dampen the possibility for the project to move forward. Also, in this, in this option, the disadvantage would really be, again, the duration of the construction impacts. So, some other things to put on your radar tonight would be, again, just reiterating that we have two large projects coming online, and we want to be cognizant of that as we think through future development and impacts from that development. Mr. Pearson tonight raised the letter of intent, so that is a part of the consideration as well as if you don't decide to go that route, the Convexity Building C either as currently approved or as proposed, and then, as always, the impacts to construction and transportation. So, in terms of the RFQP development, the Evergreen Marketing Committee was established by the DDA in August of 18, and their charge was to consider the desires of the community, priorities of the DDA, market demands, and economic realities. We included members from the DDA, the Planning Commission, the adjacent neighborhoods, MSU, and the People's Church, and their recommendations informed the RFP that's in front of you and in your packet tonight, and especially in terms of the developer qualifications, the desired uses, and the scoring criteria. And we're happy to chat with you about that and take any input that you have. But, essentially, I think the Page Nine and the concept of micro-urbanism, which really came out of the University of Chicago, University of Illinois-Champaign, I think, were agreed to best describe the desires of the committee in their attempt to reflect the community. And, these bullet points here are taken directly out of the RFP that's drafted in front of you, for tenant-driven office space that's innovative and flexible, high-quality food uses, other recreational amenities such as museums, theater, performance venue, or other creative uses to create place and activate public spaces. So, kind of options for consideration, we tried to kind of distill this into kind of two potential pathways, not to suggest that there aren't other potential pathways for you. But, option one would be to initiate a design for infrastructure improvements and kind of set the, set the stage to ultimately kind of create the program for how those, how those infrastructure improvements will take shape and release the RFP for the Evergreen properties with any additional changes you wish to suggest tonight, or ultimately, the DDA will take this up on Thursday at their, at their board meeting. Option two would be to begin negotiations for a pre-development agreement with Convexity to coordinate a new project for the Evergreen properties, along with the infrastructure work. And if, and if you would like to consider option two, I think you need to be cognizant of some of the policy issues that you need to address as part of that, which were brought up earlier, but I'll reiterate. One would be the conversion of Building C to Parkland, and the expectation that that would satisfy the 25% diversity, housing diversity requirement for both the current approved project as well as the proposed project for the Evergreen properties, which would include 230 units of mixed-market residential, a seven-to-10-story building, and an expanded TIF plan to cover infrastructure, park improvements, and other eligible activities. And with that, sorry for taking so long. I think it probably was 25 minutes.
No, thank you very much. Before you are finished, in the interest of transparency, the whole idea of a TIF is confusing to some people, so just for people who might be watching, if something costs $5,000, $5 million, and the city's going to pay for it through a bond or taxes, it costs $5 million. Can you explain how it's different? You use the term leveraging under a TIF, can you explain that, please?
Sure. So, the idea of tax increment financing is that you use the expected increase in value and the taxes therewith to essentially reimburse the developer who would put the upfront money in to pay for the infrastructure. So, you would have the benefit of using the city's expected tax increment revenues, as well as the other millages that the Brownfield Authority is able to capture. So, you're leveraging other funds from the schools, from other taxing jurisdictions, and so essentially, no upfront money would need to be expended by the city, the developer would bear those upfront costs, and then be reimbursed over time as the, as the taxes are paid.
And, the ratio of leverage for every dollar that we spend, how much do we get to leverage?
Uh...
Or look at it the other way?
Yes. I think we're, I think we're about 30% of the, but I would, I would have to research.
So, between 27 and 30% is what we used before. So, for every, so instead of spending a dollar, we only have to spend between 27 and 30, 30 cents for any project?
Yes, that's certainly the concept. I wouldn't want to be quoted as to the exact percentage, but I could find that for you in short order.
That's fine, I just wanted to get the idea out. Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Farrenbach? Okay, oh, so, Ms. Clayton?
Are any of the $3.5 million improvements for infrastructure included in the CIP? Are any of the $3.5 million improvements for infrastructure included in the CIP?
I would have to defer to Director House. I, I can tell you that-
The CIP is the Capital Improvements Plan, and that's approved by different committees in the city.
So to answer that question, it's not, but the Evergreen sewer has been identified during the fiscal year '20 budget as unknown because the development has clouded how to get the sewer up that street. It's been a long-term priority for the city, starting with numerous studies, and the development, it's a chicken and egg. How do we get through this? And this is, this has come, this is really to serve the neighborhood to the north, and this sewer has made development tricky for the developers because they don't understand how it benefits them. So to also answer your question, there's fund balance available that could be utilized to pay for this, and also other times we've done construction in advance of development, we've done deferred costs too, where you would benefit indirectly from this. The northern tier, a lot of the infrastructure was put in early on. When people were to build on the site, they would pay costs after the fact to benefit from that infrastructure investment.
Thank you. Okay. So to, to start off, I'm going to use a mayoral prerogative and give my view of what, what's going on here. I've been here, I was on the DDA before I got on council six years ago, so I've been paying attention to this issue. In fact, this is the issue that induced me to run for council back in the day. So the way it looked to me was that the city made an error back in 2007, and it wasn't an error of, a ridiculous error, it just happened to be in the biggest real estate crash in the history of my life. Actually, yeah, it was the biggest in 2008. So we spent $5 million for a piece of property that was probably not quite worth that much, but the next year it was worth significantly less. And the idea was actually to do what the, what our current plan says, which is to capitalize and strengthen existing assets. So the idea was to buy that asset and then working in with the bank building on the corner and the other blighted neighbor, uh, properties on Michigan Avenue and build something beautiful. That was in 2008, and it was a short-term ownership. We weren't going to hang on to this property. So now it's 2019, so we've hung on to this property because the recession lasted a long time, and the developer, it was hard to get the, the Grand River Development mixed in with that property. So what we, we started off as an investment in an asset to, to create growth on that side of town has turned into sort of an albatross because we owe $5 million on it. So since I got on council, all we talk about is how do we solve this problem? How do we solve this problem? And every time we try and solve it, so now it's a problem. It's not an asset we're improving. It's a debt that we're trying to offload. Every time we do something, it has to be 12 stories of student housing to pay for the debt. So that's our quandary. That's my problem, and it always has been my problem on council. And just speaking for myself, and I know that the DDA wants to know what we're thinking, I'm going to tell you what I'm thinking. I do, I, I think that with, what's different between now and 2008 is we've built two huge downtown student housing high-rises and another one on Boke Street, so three, inside the city limits. We've got new, huge student housing in the Frandor, and we're about to have thousands of units across the street from there, and there are thousands of units just east of East Lansing and Meridian Township. So we have a different housing stock than we had when we first had this great idea. We're getting a housing study. I think you just have to open your eyes to see that we, we don't, we probably are at our limit of student housing. I think we're starting to hurt MSU's student housing program, which is not something that is good for the city or for MSU. So I want to see something else there. I want to see daytime traffic. I want to see offices there. I want to see doctors. I want to see banks, a different kind of housing, something that, that adds to what we have instead of adds more of what we already have. So that's how I would like to start. I think because the DDA requested this meeting, I would like to turn it over to you if you have any specific questions. Ms. Clayton?
Do you see that with, with or without TIF funding?
I am not opposed to TIF funding. I understand the leverage, and I think it's, if we can spend a, a dollar and get much more than a dollar, I'm all for that.
How tall are you? One thing that kept coming back and forth when we were dealing with the Royal Vahakis project was that from day to day, it changed what the height that the council wanted to see was, and I think it's really difficult to have people out there giving us ideas of what they want without having any idea from council about what exactly you want height-wise?
Right. Councilmember Stevens has a good way to describe how we would like to go forward with that question. If you, if you look at the way this is set up, we aren't set up to tell you what we want. That's not how it works, but I agree that it's a ridiculous way to have it. So generally, it would be better if the zoning spoke for itself. So Councilmember Stevens.
So, and I agree with you. And honestly, you know, over the past few years, that was an issue that I had when I was, you know, seeing projects come forward, and I had disagreements about it, and, you know, we would have conditional rezoning come up, and, you know, it would be part of these properties, not part of these properties. And, you know, I think the right approach to this, and of course, I can only speak on behalf of myself, is for us as a council, and especially with our newly-elected members, to sit down and have a real discussion about what do we want our zoning at, and then that's it. Right? We have a full conversation, and hopefully I've talked to our Planning and Building Director about this, that our next discussion-only meeting, which is going to be held December 10th, we're going to be talking about zoning within the DDA district, so we can look at our comprehensive plan, we can look at our zoning laws, and just establish what we want to see. And so that way, we can send a clear message to developers that this is, you know, what the council wants, this is what we want to see. If you do something within these parameters, great. I think that the way this RFP is set up as well, and I had this conversation with Tom Farenbach as well, if we were to have our conversation on December 10th and change to, and decide that the council wants to move forward with what our comprehensive plan is or another zoning law, we would be able to update that. This, or this RFP has mentioned before that it's currently zoned RM32, but then gives an explanation of what the comprehensive plan is proposed, and has also given an explanation that it, at one point, was being proposed for B3. So I think that the RFP does outline that there is some maneuverability in that. But I can promise you that it'll at least be a priority for me, and I've talked to the mayor about this, to really establish this is what we want our zoning at, this is what we want our height at, and so that way, there's no confusion about that in the future.
So I was part of the Comp Plan Committee. I was on Planning Commission for nine years, and I have a degree in urban planning. To me, it is incredibly important that we are very clear and try to follow the Comp Plan process, the Comp Plan guidelines as much as possible. So when I look at this, it should be very black and white, and I know that everyone likes to have a lot of ambiguity about, you know, hypothetically, what would make them feel good about the downtown, but we all have differing opinions on that. But from a planning standpoint and a land use standpoint, we need to have standards that we're following, and they need to be very clear.
No, I-
And that's what I would ask from you from, because your job on this, in my opinion, is land use planning. And that's what we're doing, and that's what we're spending a lot of money on, and I want to hear from council specifically what is okay down there and not have this ambiguity anymore.
And, and I hear you, and that is our intention.
Okay.
Is there anything else? I mean, we could talk about the past if you want, but I think, I like your, your-
We've spun our wheels a lot.
Right. And I-
Three times.
Right. Mr. Demone?
I'd like to just begin as the Chair of the DDA to thank council, the mayor and council for this meeting. It's the first of its kind. I particularly would like to extend my appreciation to Mayor Protem Stevens and Councilwoman Babcock, who attended our DDA meeting this past week and helped facilitate this meeting, so, so thank you. So we have been at this for a long time, having the conversations about the Evergreen properties and what is the right thing to do in this area of downtown. There have been a variety of different types of proposals that have been submitted. I wasn't part of the DDA when the city acquired these properties, but nonetheless, since my service on the DDA, we have been trying to figure out what is the right thing to do. So having this open dialogue is really, truly appreciated. The DDA, as has been articulated by some members of the DDA, would like to have a clear idea of, you know, we have to work in partnership with one another even though we have differing responsibilities. And I think if you were to talk to each individual DDA member, they would tell you ideally what they would like to see-
Sure.
-at that, on those parcels. However, we can't make those decisions independent, and there have been proposals that have been submitted to the council that is, are in direct contrast to what the DDA has recommended. So, so again, thank you for the meeting. I don't know, Mayor, how you'd like to proceed as far as a discussion. We could perhaps share individual opinions of what we'd like to see or however you'd like to proceed.
We, we were going to do that in a discussion-only meeting, but since we're here, I think that we might as well use the time to do that. So we could have councilpeople who have strong opinions about it, or DDA members who have strong opinions about what they want to see there. Just raise your hand, and I will recognize you.
What we would like to see in terms of-
What, what, how, we, what we would like to see on that site? When I speak, I'm going to speak about, I think I already did, about what I would like to see in particular. I didn't talk about height, but I will when I get, when it gets to be my turn. So would you like to start, Councilmember Meadows?
I'm, I'm happy to start.
And the, but I want to, I want to start by referring specifically to the document that, that we're dealing, dealing with, and I think you've asked us to, to make comments with regard to. So-
The RFP?
The RFP.
Okay.
And then I'll, I'll be happy to finish with, you know, what I'd like to see on that site, so to speak. I think I would just recommend, anyway, from my standpoint, that on page 10, depending on what you're looking at, because there's two different page numbers on all this stuff, there's the actual page 10 of the RFP, which turns out to be page 12 of what we have on our screen.
So page 10 of 21?
Yes. The, it, it provides, within the DDA district, all housing is required to be urban in nature, complemented adjacent units, and provide for first-floor retail where possible. Actually, some time ago, the council provided some deviation from that requirement under a couple of circumstances, and I, I think that should be mentioned in the RFP, that if they are rezoned to B3, for instance, our, our language allows the city council to waive the retail requirement. This kind of gets into what I want to see on, on Evergreen because I see no purpose in having a retail, first-floor retail on that Evergreen site. So I'm, I throw that out there as a, as something for you to chew on when you decide whether you're going to pass this or not. If you go to page 12, the regular page 12, which is page 14 on the, on the thing, we start to talk about, I think that's the right page, that we begin to talk about the green building policy. If you take a look at the green building policy, it really is only LEED-related, and since 2009, when that was passed, we've had a number of advancements and different looks at how the city is, is viewing both solar and other activity. We've adopted a, a specific requirement that we move towards 100% renewable energy as we go forward, and I personally would like to see within the RFP some kind of reference to additional environmental with regard to this, and frankly, I think we ought to take a look at this policy with regard to green buildings because it needs to be updated. It needs to be changed, and there are some issues involving LEED certification that weren't in existence in 2009 that we need to, need to address. So I'd like to see us, like, give a preference. The more, the more green the building is, the more we're likely to, to give a thumbs up to it. There's also an issue regarding parking, because, for instance, the convexity proposal had limited parking there. There's no question that in some respects, along Grand River next to the church, there's going to be redevelopment. I know we've got the, the owner-operator of, of the greatest, one of the greatest restaurants that we have in East Lansing sitting over here, but, you know, we're going to have some redevelopment in that area. We need additional parking, and that particular proposal doesn't address the church's requirements with regard to parking too. So I think we need to have something in here which identifies sort of a minimal amount of parking. Even though the city council and the Planning Commission can waive parking requirements, I think we need to recognize, and I know that's, that's, that's just my view with regard to this, I think we need some more parking in that area, so I'm, I'm interested in, in seeing us have more of a discussion of it or a suggestion as to it in the RFP. There is a, you know, those are my basic, my basic discussion with regard to the actual language of the RFP. I would say that at this point in time, if I'm asked my sort of preference with regard to that area, and I've already indicated, number one, I'd like to see us have a breather with regard to development in this area until we can see how the, the two large buildings that the mayor referenced in the downtown, the specific downtown area, work, how, what kind of traffic we actually see, what kind of foot traffic and vehicular traffic we see in that area. I'd like to get them up and running so that we can gauge what we have there. We also have a hotel, which is basically going to use up the additional spaces that we, we have in the city center garage in order to provide parking for the people who are staying there. So we, we, we need to take a look at how this is all going to function. So for me, an RFP, which goes out 120 days, let's say, and really results in a, in a project that may be coming to city council within a year and a half or two years, really works for me. I think that then we can have some kind of analysis. But I agree with the mayor that another apartment building just doesn't, just doesn't fit the bill for me. You know, if there was owner-occupied housing that was built in there, if there were offices that were built in there, you know, for me, I'm more flexible with regard to heights because of the nature of that it might be. With, if it was just rental housing of some kind, or I'm okay with low to moderate income, more low to moderate income there too, but if it's just rental housing, I'm not interested, I'm, I'm just not interested at this point in time at seeing that approved on that particular site. So that's, that's where I'm at with regard to it. I'm more flexible on height, I think, but only with the right project being there.
Thank you, Councilmember Meadows.
Okay, Meadows.
Mayor Protem.
I'm still bringing my thoughts together.
Okay. Councilmember Babcock, would you like to weigh in, or would you like to pass and speak later?
I think I'll pass and speak later.
Okay. Councilmember Gregg, same question?
I guess I, I do have some thoughts that I'd like to share, but I think I'd like to, if there's anyone from the DDA that wants to speak more about the process that you guys have gone through, since you guys have been living this for much longer than, obviously Lisa and myself, but it's been more on your minds than on council's minds, and you hopefully have stronger thoughts about it. And then I would like to share my thoughts later.
Okay.
Are you looking to do a moratorium? Councilmember Meadows mentioned taking more time, and that concerns me with the stress that it puts on our downtown businesses.
No.
Okay.
I don't think, I mean, it takes two years probably to get anything. I don't think we actually need a moratorium at this point.
Okay. I just, when I hear more time, in the past, the council, that has typically meant that the council was looking at doing a moratorium? And because this was the first property, and it was purchased in 2009 with the intent to be developed, I would not feel comfortable with that, especially for our businesses downtown.
And I'm only speaking for myself, but that's the first I've heard of a moratorium, and I would not be supportive of such a thing.
I didn't mention a moratorium.
I know, but when-
So I'm not into a moratorium.
But typically, when people, when, when council said more time, that's what it means.
This is all about transparency, transparency between both groups, so if you have a question like that, ask, and we will answer. Mr. Demone?
I do have an opinion of what I'd like to see in this area of the city, and I recognize that I am just one of 12 members of the DDA. When we entered into the Market Committee and developed an RFP, my opinion all along was it was more of a land use question than it was a financial question. I also respect the fact that we have five and a half million dollars worth of debt that we need to address, so I'm not, that's not completely lost on me. But my view is that we have a, this is a really critical time in our city's history where we are completely changing the landscape of our downtown, and we have an opportunity to do something really special in this area of the city. This is a once-in-a-lifetime- This is a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity. I don't think you have the occasion where you can completely transform and be visionary in scope as far as how you would like to see your city advance into the future, and that is the moment we have right now. The proposal that has been submitted by convexity, I like a lot of that proposal. It's transformational in nature. In the 22 years that I have served on city boards and commissions, this is the first occasion where I've ever seen a developer step forward and say, "I'm going to expand the footprint of your park by an acre, 1.2 acres." It also addresses a significant financial question that we have with regard to resolving the DDA's debt. It also can be transformational in nature in that there is a public, innumerable public benefit components to this proposal, one of which is a plaza, which I envision down the road could be utilized for our folk festivals, for the art fair, for summer concerts, theaters in the park, theater performances. It also could be utilized for a winter carnival or perhaps ice skating in the wintertime. This is an area of the city that can be completely utilized by all of our citizens. I recognize we would have to give up low-to-moderate-income housing in this area to receive all these public benefits. There are innumerable places throughout the city where we can have low-to-moderate-income housing, and it's not that I don't appreciate having low-to-moderate-income housing, but I don't know if these parcels are the best place in the downtown to be utilized for that manner. So, with regard to the RFP, I'm hopeful that this submission by one developer can be contemplated in an RFP process with other like-minded ideas to follow from other developers. So, that's kind of my two cents, and I appreciate the opportunity to share it.
Thank you. Mr. Balline, would you like to say anything?
Sure, sure. I always have something to say, you know me.
Pull up your mic, please.
I'm sorry?
Pull your mic forward.
Pull my mic forward.
Yeah. There you go.
Is that better?
That's better.
So, I guess for me, you know, I always envisioned this to be kind of like an M3 zone based on the comp plan. I think we saw the most recent project come forward, and the majority of the council members expressed disinterest because of the height of it. They thought it was out of place, being that close to the neighborhood, being over 100 feet. I think that the M3 zoning from the comp plan provides for 84-foot of height. It's a 1.08-acre lot. I think there's more than enough room to accomplish what needs to be accomplished on the property, even with a full-price offer. I don't think we need to compromise on that. The thing that's kind of disturbing to me about this is that we keep wanting to have retail or something like that on the ground floor. And I believe that if we're going to straighten out Albert Avenue and abandon Evergreen in front of that property, and then not provide the parking that's necessary for that retail, that whatever we put in there, it will fail. You know, we've seen both DTN with the 300 West Grand, and we've seen the Graduate Hotel both pull out of their retail and decline to build it, and there's a reason for that. It's because they can't rent it. So, I mean, the high cost of building it, plus I look at the advantage of if we did not require retail on the ground floor, I believe that's a 25 or 26-foot height. It could bring the building height down. That's two more floors of something that we can provide for, whether it's parking, whether it's housing of some sort, office space. I don't pretend to know what the use would be, but to bring that down, the one story of requirement of retail, and I just think that whatever goes in there is going to be handicapped by design, because we're abandoning Evergreen, straightening out Albert, losing parking. There's just, I think that you're handicapping whoever goes in there from the start and saying, "Okay, now make it work." I also believe that whatever component we look at, I believe it's got to have some sort of public parking component at that end, not just provide for private parking for tenants or whatever will be occupying the space. I think once the Abbott and the Graduate come online, I think it'll become more readily apparent of just what a parking problem will have at that end of town. And so, it'd be a shame if we didn't find a way to incorporate parking into this project, even if it means the Valley Court, you know, abandoning it and finding some way to incorporate the Valley Court. I don't know. I don't have the answer. I just have a lot of concerns of what our expectations are for the project. And I know that in order to keep it under a certain height, that there's going to have to be some compromises on our part, and we might not get what we really want out of it.
Your mind at ease from my perspective, and I think Councilmember Meadows just weighed in on this, and I know Councilmember Stevens has in the past. We are not wed to retail on the first floor on a building that's going to face an alley.
Right.
So, we're not in the DDA, but we're not that.
But it's part of the zoning, and I think when we put that out there, we need to be very clear within the RFP that, you know, we don't anticipate you to build a 26-foot-tall
First floor, and I think.
Shopping mall, you know, or whatever it is. We don't think that may be the proper use for it in that location.
And I think Mr. Meadows recommended changing that in the RFP itself, so.
And I did, one more point, too. You know, market talked about green buildings and stuff, and I think the key word there is to put some words about sustainability into it. I mean, sustainable buildings going forward, big deal within our environment and within the industry. So, I think that we need to find sustainable buildings, whatever is going to go on this, that it's sustainable.
Thank you, Ms. Clayton.
And that's it.
Thank you for the, are you ready?
Okay. Mr. Hagney?
Yeah. I kind of echo a lot of Greg's sentiments. We kind of both brought that up at the last meeting. To me, honestly, the outstanding principle is probably the thing I'm most concerned with. I would probably be looking at that first and foremost, but it sounds like that is not really on your minds as much as I think it is for us, or at least a majority of us. And I actually had a question for you in regards, you mentioned a housing study. Is that something that's currently happening? What is, where are we at with that process?
So, we are actually discussing this at our business meeting. We have, I think we put out an RFP for the housing study.
No, we're considering the.
We're considering.
Decide to move forward, hopefully, with information about it, and then having council give us direction to move forward.
Can you?
So, we will be having, presenting it to council and having council's direction to move forward, so we'll be presenting it to council now.
That's tonight.
Tonight.
At this, after this meeting.
It just sounded like, Mayor, like you had issues with putting another apartment complex there, that you already have put in your mind that we definitely have too much in spite of the fact that Meridian Township is not really part of us, Frandor is not part of us, like, those are competitors in my mind.
That's an interesting perspective. I think what Councilmember Meadows, I'm going to speak for you again, sorry, if you want to jump in.
Whatever you want to do, I do.
Okay.
Things have changed.
What we are both saying is, we may well be competing with Meridian Township in Lansing for housing, but they do add to the housing. So, if we have enough housing, these big buildings may fail, and that would be a disaster.
And just as a side note.
Mayor Protem.
Sorry. Just to respond to your comment, you know, I, and again, I'm only speaking for myself, but in my mind, you know, when you look at what's happening in Frandor, what's happening in Meridian, what that really bodes to is a regional approach to this. And while I don't share fully what the mayor has stated about no more, you know, housing in our downtown, I think we should recognize the fact that, you know, Meridian is looking to develop. We all have already seen investment being done in that region, or in the Frandor area, and so, I wouldn't say it is competition. I would say it is regional cooperation, right? We don't want to overextend ourselves and work towards a situation where we are competing with each other, and then we both end up, or we all end up suffering, right, because of lower occupancy rates. So, while I don't fully share the opinion of the mayor that we are done with housing, you know, I understand the concern that's there with them building, so I appreciate that comment.
All right, thank you both.
Are you, do you have more comments?
I probably do, but we'll go to Michael.
Okay, Mr. Krueger.
Hi, yeah, thank you. I appreciate being recognized, but I think my biggest concern is that with this RFP is that we're going to end up putting too many stringent components on it and not necessarily let the developers bring to us what they think that the market will bear. And I certainly concern, or share concern with Councilmember Meadows and Greg about the parking in that area. I appreciate the compliment about our restaurant down there, but, you know, it is a huge concern in the Valley Court area. I just don't want us to overdo it and to give too many, it's good for all of us to have our opinions on what we want down there, but to put that into an RFP, I think, could be dangerous when it comes back to us, and so I just want to be careful with, I guess, that. With respect to the zoning that Mayor Protem spoke about, you know, I don't have a problem with having specific zoning codes in there as to what we're looking for, but I also think that we need to, you know, be careful with that and make sure that we allow for the opportunity for conditional rezoning if the project presents itself that makes sense, you know, so essentially, those are my comments.
Thank you. Ms. Rhodey?
Thank you. I know money isn't the most important thing, but I've spent my career in municipal finance, and I'm extremely concerned about the debt and the corresponding sales price of the property. We need to get as high as we can to remove as much of that debt as we can, so that we do have money to do these other projects that need to be done. This is a point I've made at every meeting. I will continue to make it, that the elimination of that debt has to be a high priority in reviewing these RFPs.
Thank you. Mr. Soodal?
Thank you. I appreciate this meeting, and I think it's a great opportunity for me to listen as a DDA board member. I agree with really many of the comments that have been said today, but for me, speaking for myself, the biggest concern has been the debt. I think it is significant stress to the DDA and ultimately to the city, and I think it needs to be, it's, for me, the primary concern in many respects and will continue to be. I don't want to bring up the past, but in many ways, I still look at the last project that we considered, the Royal of La Hocas, and it satisfied the low-to-medium housing requirement. It had a food center gathering space, and yet, it was ultimately, you know, and a full-price offer. For me, I felt that was worthy of our consideration, and I'm a little frustrated that others, you know, ultimately felt otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
So, first of all, I really appreciate this discussion, and I think that this is what hopefully we're going to see a lot more of. And I think the top priority for me, honestly, and we've talked a lot about different uses, but I am going to be much more likely to approve a project that is being proposed through a public, transparent RFP process in which citizens have several opportunities to give input. At the end of the day, you know, whatever project is being proposed, if it goes through that process, I'm much more likely to get on board with it, because I think that's a good thing. It's right next to a neighborhood. We have businesses that are around the corner. We have the People's Church. We have other businesses on that corridor, and we got to make sure that, you know, this is something that everybody's involved with. So, the RFP process for me was honestly one of the biggest things in this, so I'm happy to see that we're going forward with it. So, I'll just give you a little bit of my perspective on this, and of course, I'm only one council member, so, you know, take it with a grain of salt. So, M3 is what is designed in the comp plan, which is six stories. I am also not committed to having retail on the ground floor, so I suppose that, while we're sitting here, that is three council members that is not committed to having on the ground floor. I cannot speak for the other two that have not spoken yet. I'd like to see office. I would love to see office in that region. If it is just office and not housing, wonderful. For me, the debt is a big deal, but I also don't want to subjugate our neighborhood, surrounding area, to what I think could be a grander project and proposal than what that area should be, because we want to see all of that debt eliminated. If we look at a lower price and then can leverage funds after the fact, I'm also fine with that occurring, because, you know, while it doesn't take care of the debt in the most pretty way, I think it makes sure that we're protecting our neighborhoods and we are making sure that we are getting, looking at this from the view of what's the best project for East Lansing, rather than what's the best way that we can get rid of this debt. Again, that is just my opinion, but I also, getting rid of that debt and getting the highest price for those properties is a big priority for me, but I also don't want us to look at it from the view of compromising and moving towards something that would really negatively impact the neighborhood or surrounding regions, or surrounding areas, because we want to see that debt eliminated. So, I, we're going through with a housing study, hopefully, tonight, giving, you know, giving feedback to our staff on the RFP that's proposed. I am not committed to this. Obviously, I am a fan of moderate-income to low-income housing, but of course, with that height requirement being lower, I understand that that might not be in there, and that is okay with me, but I am always more in favor of income-qualified housing. It's one of the few tools we have in the state of Michigan to make sure that there is affordable housing within our community. And parking requirements has been mentioned a few times. I am always interested to see when we get updates on parking within the city of East Lansing, what our occupancy is, where we are when it's game days, and when we tend to have the most people, and we tend not to fill up fully. So, for me, parking requirements, if it can be maintained within our system, if this is a project that's being proposed that won't increase the parking load that much, and we have our staff and a study that, you know, is indicative of that, that's great, but at the same time, I want to make sure it addresses the church's need and those businesses around it, and addresses the need that it actually creates, right? So, I'm not necessarily saying even we need public parking in that area, but if there's an office building there and they need parking for their tenants, I want to see that as an aspect, if our current system cannot handle it. But I am, again, not committed to having that public.
I think it'd be really helpful if we had an understanding of why you rejected. I think it would be very helpful if we had an idea why, at least the three members of council, who are previously in council, why they rejected the past proposal that the majority of the DDA thought was a responsible way to move forward on this project, on this property.
Sure. I can only speak for myself, unless the mayor wanted to go.
No, go ahead.
So, I can only speak on behalf of myself, but again, I would have preferred a public process in regards to an RFP. I was worried when deadlines were being missed and projects were getting changed around. For me, again, we heard from the neighborhood, from People's Church, that was not in favor of the project when it came to us in council. They were in favor of it before, and they switched that opinion after the fact. The planning commission was not in favor of it. It didn't go with the comprehensive plan, which is designated as six stories M3. And while it would have eliminated the debt in the full amount, I was not seeing the full public benefit to what I thought was a market that had not been fully flushed out at that point. I ended up doing, you know, some outreach to the MSU professor that had talked about it, and I asked some questions of them when they were there, and they had indicated that they couldn't necessarily speak on behalf of their school. So, even though the incubator stage was a really, really cool idea, and we do need it in the city of East Lansing, that was not a guarantee. And so, while I would have seen that as a significant public benefit, I couldn't necessarily weigh that in, because it wasn't being fully flushed out at that point, to my knowledge.
Councilmember Meadows?
Well, you know, I voted consistent with what I had stated at DDA, which I was on at the time. I think from June on, maybe even before that, I had been voting against extending the timeframe, because I didn't feel that the project met what it had originally been proposed as. I know there were some mentioned that city council made the changes. City council did not make any changes to this project. The developer made the changes. And when that development made those changes, it changed my entire attitude towards that particular project. So, I voted consistent with the way I had been voting. I didn't think the project was what we wanted on that site. I didn't think the project was what we wanted on that site. And I, I recognize that there is motivation to vote for projects because of the debt that exists with regard to this project. And I had one person indicate to me that it was good enough because it got rid of the debt. I don't think we want good enough there. I think we want a, an outstanding project there, and that's what I was hoping for. So that's why I voted against it.
I would have to say that as one of the people who felt like it ticked the boxes, we didn't feel that it was good enough. We felt like it ticked enough of the boxes that we needed to move forward. So I just, I, I feel like that portrayal is not necessarily fair.
So, so you asked, but you asked how, how we felt.
Yeah.
So, and, and that was Councilmember Meadows' opinion, and it's also my opinion, is it was not what I thought. We, I did vote for, supported the original proposal that had the movie theater, that had the parking, that had a lot more of the public elements. This one felt to me like it was a way to pay off the debt, and I know it's vital to pay down the debt, but as Councilmember Meadows said, I'm not willing to put a high-rise student building there to pay off the debt. I would rather pay off part of the debt or find another way to refinance the debt because I think we've overdone the housing, and that's why I voted no. And I'm, I, I'm sorry, there was no venue to, to convey that. I was under the impression that you were getting that feeling pretty strongly with the council's liaison consistently voting no, but obviously you did not.
The RFP concern was completely new to me.
Right.
So I.
So did that answer your question?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, any other? Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. Councilmember Babcock and Greg.
Sure. I, I don't know if this is working. So I'm new to this, and I'm going to take the, the opportunity that offers by asking a question that may be remedial. Has anyone valued this property lately, and what is the actual value of this property? Do we have comps? Do we have anything other than an assumption?
We have an NOI.
Tom, Fairbach.
We, we have not performed an appraisal, but the assumption is the value of the property is quite a bit less than, than the amount of the debt outstanding. It's been estimated at about $3 million.
What would it take to do an appraisal?
It would, it would take probably between $10,000 and $15,000 would be my estimation to, to engage a professional appraiser for the entire property.
Is there any other way to ascertain the current value of this property?
We, we can have the assessor do a true cash value estimate that would give some idea of, of that, but there really is no other way to obtain sort of a defensible.
Go ahead. Tom, I believe that, I believe that you can just take the, we know what we're making in rents on it. We know what we're paying in the way of, of management fees for the property. You know, there's two ways to approach it from an appraisal. An income approach works here, and it's pretty doable for us. It's going to be a far lower number than we all want it to be. I think there's, everybody here would be in agreement that we overpaid for the properties.
I, I think that's certainly agreed upon. I just wonder what the value of it is.
So in, in any economic situation, the value is what somebody will pay. And, and this is going to be wrapped up in the RFP and in the proposals. And, and it seems like the DDA, most people on the DDA have a full price, and what they mean by full price is full debt, bottom line, which I appreciate because it keeps the DDA from being bankrupt and the city, because we are full faith and credit behind the DDA, so.
I, I appreciate that. I think many in this community would say, and I hate to be the fly in the ointment, but I think many in this community would say the city has not had a good track record recently of valuing property or understanding what the market value of property would be.
That's a good point. Yep. Councilmember Greg.
I'm going to go way back in the conversation to when Mayor Byer asked what we would, what our ideal project on that property would be. And my ideal project, my ideal for that property is pretty darn close to the letter of intent from Convexity. There's a few things that I don't like about it. I don't like that it's not part of the RFP process. I would really, you know, encourage them to evaluate their timeline and submit that as a true proposal under the RFP. I think it's pretty clear from this mix of people up here that we're committed to moving forward with that. I think the problem has been pretty eloquently represented by everybody else, that if we really insist on getting our full debt value out of that property, it's going to push it into a zone that isn't appropriately large for that area. I think that's what we saw with the first exclusive proposal. And I think I, myself, am fairly committed to the idea of sticking with our comprehensive plan in terms of future zoning, so I really would prefer to see any project coming in on there, you know, sticking to that six stories with 84 feet with the special use permit, so that's, you know, essentially eight stories. And if you're talking about $5 million for a relatively compact piece of property, and then limiting the height to eight stories, you've really restrained the possibilities under that RFP, which is why I, you know, I hope that Convexity comes forward with their proposal, since they already have financial interest in that area. They have some flexibility in terms of height for what they could build. Also, I don't think retail on the first floor is, you know, obviously, I think we're all with that. I would love to see moderate income housing, but again, we're asking over-market value for our land, so I think that's unlikely. I also think, you know, office buildings are probably, speculative office space is probably also not what we're going to see, although I would love to see that. So in summary, I think the RFP is pretty strongly worded as written. I'd like to reinforce the idea of sticking with the comprehensive plan height in that, but I think at the same time, we are going to have to resolve ourselves of possibly not getting that full amount of debt and what that means. I, I'm just going to say again that I don't love to financing that 60% or 70% that we're getting. It's not money that appears out of nowhere. It's money that is being not borrowed because we're not going to give it back to them. It is being taken from our, our residents for things that they specifically voted to favor, such as transportation, parks infrastructure, library infrastructure, schools infrastructure. And I think we have to be very, very deliberate about using that financing because in general, the high level of TIF in our county is driving up these dedicated villages because our communities don't have enough money for things, so then they vote a dedicated village, and then we TIF the hell out of it, and they don't have the money that they thought. So then there's another village. So it's not a great, not a great way to finance things. But anyway, that's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Meadows.
Yeah, I want to sort of second, you know, some of what Lisa just mentioned, which I, I think that we should go ahead during this time period, assuming this RFP is issued, that we should go ahead and engage in assessment and appraisal of that property so that we have that in hand to help evaluate the, the proposals that come in as well. I think if we have that, we're going to have a better feel for whether we're getting, you know, a good proposal in terms of the price for that property or not. So I, I think we should go ahead and do that. I just wanted to weigh in on that.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protem.
I had just one question of Councilmember Babcock in regards to the appraisal. I am also in favor of us looking into that, but did you, were you suggesting that we do that before an RFP is sent out, or?
I don't know, to be honest.
Okay.
I don't know. I'm still too far back on the learning curve. We certainly want to know that before we select something, but I, I think anytime, this may be a simplistic response, but if you were going to sell anything you owned, your, your car, a home, you'd have the value, I think, before you put out the proposal. So actually, I would recommend evaluation before we put out the RFP. I think that gives us a better idea of what we're dealing with.
So just as a, my own opinion, I would like to see this RFP go out and maybe, I think, a timeline, sorry.
Complete, and then I'll, go ahead.
Then, that's just my opinion, I'd like to see this RFP go out in a, in a timely fashion, and then if we could do an appraisal before a decision is made, I think that's good. But I think our RFP process also breeds some competition along those lines as well.
Is there still a house?
Yeah, we could certainly move forward with doing a, doing a appraisal concurrently with the RFP going out, so there's nothing to stop us from starting that process now. If the amount is where we said at $10,000 or $15,000, we could sign that and move that forward. If council wants that direction, I think it's certainly reasonable to go that direction, and that doesn't have to stop the RFP. It can, it can go concurrently. Because I think we'll be about a month getting an appraisal, probably at the least.
So will we see that on an agenda, or?
I don't think we need to. If the amount is under $20,000, then, then I've heard from council, you want us to move that forward, and we can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Graham. Clayton. Clayton.
I personally, Matt is interested in the appraisal at this point in time. I think there might be a point down the road to have that, but right now, we know we've got $5.4 million that we have in debt service, and we know that we want $3.5 million in infrastructure improvements with, and that puts us up to $8.9 million. For me, at this point, I'd like to see what we have from different developers, and if we need to have an appraisal at that point before moving forward, I would feel comfortable with that, but I think it's time to see what they, it's time again to see what they want to bring forward before we start putting a specific price tag on this, when we know we owe, we know what we owe, and that, to me, is the bottom line. We know that that is most likely, that is higher than the value of it.
Thank you. This, this part of the agenda necessarily has to come to an end, but it includes communications from DDA members in addition to the communications that you wanted us to hear. So are there any DDA members who would like to make some statements to the, to the viewers and the audience? Mr. Dewan.
I would just, once again, like to thank the mayor of the council for affording us the opportunity to discuss the Evergreen properties. I go back to my earlier comments. I, I think this is really a, a window of opportunity for our community that we should embrace and be excited about, and really put together a, a, a vision that can be embraced by the entire community. So I, I do like the public benefit components that have been expressed with what has been shared tonight, and I hope we can take advantage of some of those opportunities.
Thank you. Anybody else from the DDA? Yes.
I'd just like to stress that, you know, I mean, it's of vital importance that we move this forward as fast as we can to get it out there for RFP, get it back, analyze it, decide what we want to do and move forward, just with the utmost speed. We can do the appraisal concurrently with it, and I think that's probably the solid course of action, if that's necessary.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, and then also, there is communication from council members. I'll start, and perhaps I will encapsulate everybody's feeling, but perhaps not. Mr. Dewan, thank you very much for coming out tonight. This has been very helpful for me, I think for everybody, and I think for the viewing audience to see how these two entities work together. I don't want this feeling to happen again, so I am personally committed to conveying to you what we want in as black and white as possible. Any other council member?
Ditto.
Councilmember Meadows.
This is not on the subject that we've been talking about this evening, but for the first time in my life, I went to New York over the last weekend, and I just want to mention that because we have the DDA here and we've dealt with the downtown in terms of transportation, there were no scooters in New York. There were no scooters allowed in New York, so.
Interesting.
Just bring that up to mention it.
Councilmember Babcock? Do you have anything additional?
Well, no, I, I still haven't been on a scooter, but I did download the Lime app. I don't think my health insurance coverage is high enough for me to get on a scooter, but I, all seriousness, thank you very much to the DDA for coming. Again, I acknowledge I have a learning curve, and I, I appreciate any thoughts you want to share. And Mr. Dewan, I've had a lot of respect to you for decades. I won't say how many, so thank you very much for coming.
Councilmember Greg.
This was fun. Let's do it again.
Okay, with that, we are adjourned. The next meeting will start in approximately 10 minutes.